It's time to log in! Hello everyone! Wait... Why is my model doing that? Why is my model doing that? Hello? Hello? Excuse me, can you work please? I'm going closer. Hi guys! Hi guys, hi guys! This time... This time we're gonna log in, chat! Last... My last study session? Why am I so laggy today? Anyway guys, my last study session? I yapped. I'm not gonna lie, chat. All I did was yap. And that's really bad. But this time, I'm gonna log in. For real, for real. And you guys are with me. But hello Nas! Welcome in, welcome in! Nice to see you, nice to see you! How are you? Guys? Hello Kyla, hopefully you're doing well, having a wonderful day. So I am... I had a really busy day today. I'm not gonna lie. I had... I had like a meeting and I had like... I had a bunch of other things. I have school... But... I'm... I'm so behind guys. I am like 14 lectures behind for one of my classes! I'm not gonna lie. But it's okay! We'll get through it! We'll get through it! So... You know the drill with Pomodoro? Um... We do like 20 minutes of studying. It's different for everyone. But I'm doing 20 minutes of studying and then I'm gonna... I'mma... I'mma chill. Do my... Do my... Do my work. And then... We're gonna... We're gonna log in for 20 minutes. And then? We're gonna have a break. And we'll... That's when we can yap! We can... We can yappy, yappy, yappy! And then... And then we can... And we can go back to studying. And you can do whatever you want, by the way. You can watch a show. Watch... Watch an anime episode. That's 20 minutes! You can... You can do your work. Or you can just chill. Or you can see me suffer for 20 minutes straight! Whatever you wanna do! Whatever you wanna do, it's chill. It's chill. But yeah... But... Today, I have a few things I wanna get done. So I guess I'm gonna... I'm gonna log in and try and do the... I should tie my hair. I have... I have like an addiction... To scrunchies. If you don't... If you guys don't know what scrunchies are, they're like hair ties. But they look really cute. I have like 15 of them. I don't need... I... Like realistically, I only need like 1 or 2. But I have like 15. Overconsumption at its finest. I'm currently watching a beautiful Yonderig girl right now. What do you mean Yonderig girl? Who? Who? Where? I don't see any Yonderig girls! Who are you talking about? Are you calling another girl beautiful? That's not me? Huh? Is that what you're doing? Also, who the hell? Who the hell voted "nah" in my poll? Who... 60% of you said "nah". I can log in! I can log in, I believe in myself! Okay, but that's... I did not... You know... I... I did have a little bit... Little bit of an incident last... Last study session when I just yapped. But... But, chat! Chat! I still got work done regardless. I still got... But I'm logging in this time. I'm gonna be silent, silent. This time. I'm gonna be silent and I... I'm not... I'm not even gonna look at chat that much. I'm gonna... I'm gonna be so locked in, I'm gonna forget about you guys. And you... You guys will have to deal with it. Until the time is... Time is up. Like I... I'm... I'm logging in chat. Like this time, I swear. Oh no, what incident? So... Last... Last study session? I was like, "Okay, I'm gonna log in and do this work." All I did was yap! All I did was yap and... But I still got the work done, but... I yapped. Like the whole... The whole study session I just yapped. Because chat was too fun to talk to. Please don't ignore us! I won't! I won't. I'll... I'll yap here and there. I might... I might yap here and there. But this time, I'm... I'm... I'm logging in. I'm gonna go... Jum, jum, jum! And go shout through all these assignments. Yah, yah, yah! And then... And then we're gonna... We're gonna get through it. We're gonna get through it. Yapping is working? That is lowkey true. Yapping takes a lot of work, guys. Yapping takes a lot of work. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Alright. I'm gonna start in a minute. I'mma start in 1 minute. 'Cause... How many sessions should we do? I say we study for like an hour. I say we study for an hour. Hi Kyla, chat! Hi! Hi Freddie, welcome in! Welcome in, welcome in! How are you? I'm about to start my Pomodoro timer. In... In... In a minute. Yeah. You guys are so mean! You know what? I... I think... I think I can log in. Whoever voted "nah" in my poll just now? Like... Like... You're just not believing in me enough. You know, I believe in myself. I believe I can log in. And I'm gonna prove you guys wrong. What's your current subjects like you're stuck in? Okay, so I'm like 14 lectures behind. For one of my classes! It's like a science class. Um... But there's also another one that's really hard. And I... I'm also kind of behind on that. So I'm trying to... I'm trying to log in to catch up basically this time. 14... Yeah, 14 hours of... Of lectures that I am behind. But realistically? Realistically, I don't think they're gonna be too hard. I think I can lowkey just look at the slides and I'll be fine. But... I should look at them. I should... Holy heck! I progressed tonight, but... I promise it's only that class. It's only 1. It's only 1. Weston, welcome in! Itasai, welcome in! Nice to have you! Alright! Ciao, it's time to log in! Time to log in! I'm gonna listen... What should I listen to? I think I should listen to... I think I should listen to... Sabrina Capitola. Because I... Like her songs. Let me listen to her. Do you guys want me to mute my mic? Do you wanna hear my typing sounds? Is that annoying? Alright. I'mma... I'mma log in. Guys, ready? 3... 2... 1! Oh shit! Time to log in! Oh, Wayover, welcome in! Nice to see you! I'm logging in now. I'm logging in. I'm... I'm gonna go dead silent. That's right, that's right. I need to watch these... All these lectures. You know? You know, I brought it up on myself. How has it already been 3 minutes? Waited, welcome in on the Twitch side! Welcome, welcome! I'm logging in! I'mma log in. You log in with us. I'm... I'm trying to catch up on my missed out lectures. Karma's... Karma slapped me. Karma's slapping me on the face right now. But welcome in, Itasai! Ooh, thank you, Waited, for the follow! Thank you so much! You okay? I'm... I'm... I'm fine! I'm... Doing great! I'm... I'm okay! I'm fine! I have finals, finals in couple days! Oh! Log in, radioactive! 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 Oh my guys, time to log in! I just bonked my mic, I'm sorry! Log in, time to log in! Oh my gosh! Yeah, I'm dyshobooded right now. I'm not okay right now. I'm like 14 lectures behind. That's on me! That's on me! I hope I help you log in. I hope you do well in the finals though! Finals are hard. Finance is hard. Insert California dance music. California girls are unforgettable! Oh, she's doing it! I'm doing it! I'm actually logging in, chat. Actually logging in. I'm so proud of my Oshi! I knew Oshi! Oh my gosh, stop! Hope I started corrected? What do you mean? Focus on your 14 hours behind lecture, Kyla? I am! I am, I swear! I like how streamers talk to 2 different platforms. Twitch and YouTube. Cute and empty-headed. What do you mean? I'm not empty-headed! I have a... I have a bit brain! That's why I have a big forehead! And I need to cover it with my bags! What... What do you mean? Huh? What do you mean? I got bullied! I'm just doing my work and I got bullied. Tell? It's called multitasking. It's called multitasking. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Chat, why does my lecture have 95 slides? Crying! 95 what? 95 slides? There's 95 slides for this lecture? It's okay, you can do it, I believe in you. Thank you! Thank you, I need that. I need that. That looks a little bit... That's what I thought. Not cute! Or... Nor am I empty-headed. That's right, that's right! You should see my biceps! You should see my biceps! Yeah. It's gonna remind you of the... Of the guy that she tells you not to worry about. Uh-huh, uh-huh, that's right! That's right! KD, welcome in! Itasai! I'm logging in! I log... I'm logging in, chat! I'm logging in! Prove it! How do I prove that I'm not empty-headed? How do I prove that I'm not empty-headed? Kyla is just easily distracted? That is true! That is true. That is true. That is true. I do get easily distracted. But... 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 That just means you... I just... I just like you guys and I'm paying attention to you guys, right? Right? It's not all bad. Namri, welcome in! Hi! 25 seems okay, you can do it? No, not 25! 9... 95! 95! 9... 5! How do you say 9 in Spanish? Nu... Nuevo or something? 9 and 5! 9, 5! 6, 7... No! 9, 5, bitches, guys! I... I didn't call you bitches, I just... I just meant that like... You get what I mean, right? I didn't mean it! I didn't mean all attention. But it's 95! Why do you need 95 slides? Why do you need... I swear, they have like 2 words in each slide. What? I hate this... I hate this professor! I challenge you? Hi Kyla, very welcome in! Suspicious, right? Why do you need 95 slides? Sorry, I missed all the su... No, don't be sorry! Don't be sorry! I just... You know who should be sorry? This professor! For making 95 slides! What... What is wrong with you? I had some 100+ ones or twice? That sounds so bad! Oh... 95 office workers worst nightmare? Actually... Actually... My worst nightmare. Right here. You got this? I hope so. I'm... I'm gonna log in, guys. Honestly, I... I'm not too worried. I'm honestly not too worried. I think I can do it. I hear clicks in the background? Are you clicking something on the keyboard? Yeah, I'm typing on my laptop. Do you want me to mute myself? Heya Kyla! Hi! Welcome in! Welcome in! Do you guys want me to mute? Is it... Is that annoying? Is my keyboard sounds annoying? You know, one time? When I was like... When I was in like high school or something? I used to do like tutoring. I used to tutor kids. And I was typing on my laptop? And they said? That I type so slow. They said that I type really slow. And that hurt my feelings. I was like, "I... I don't... I type okay!" Please stay unmuted. Okay! Radioactive! Radioactive! Sorry, I need to sing that song every... Every time I see your... Your name. Radioactive. I sometimes use these study streams to help me work on writing concepts. Ooh! And earlier, my mother wanted me to make a decaf latte of sorts. Latte of sorts. And she did not use decaf, so I exist 3:40 AM. Oh my god, do you... Do you pack with single fingers? No! No! I type... I type with... With all... I think? All 5? Or 10? Wait, does coffee affect you that much? I feel bad for you! Coffee and energy drinks don't work on me. I drink them as soon as I go to bed, like... I like... I drink it and then I go to bed. I go to Mimiland. I go to Mimiland. What kind of studies are you doing? Medicine? Uh, I am a STEM student, so I... I do lots of science. Lot of science, yes. I sometimes do computational analysis. TWD has... Twas a double espresso? Why? No! Not decaf? No! Poor you! Energy drinks put me to sleep? Yeah, me too, actually. I got ADHD or something? Honestly, I think I also have ADHD, but I... I can't be bothered to get it checked. It's too much of a long process. I wanna live in a lie! That I'm normal! I can't drink... Uh, coffee because of church stuff? Oh right, you're like... It's part of your... Well, what do you call it? Like... Your... Would it be an obligation? Like a diet obligation? I have ADHD. I probably do too. I'm not gonna lie. It's getting worse and worse every year. I could feel it. But I don't wanna get diagnosed, cuz it takes too long. Takes too long. I probably should. We've been like putting it off for years. Me too, no lie. Yeah, like... I think the fact that I've been putting off getting... Getting like it checked for so long tells me that I might have ADHD! But maybe not hyperactive. Am I hyperactive? I don't think I'm hyperactive. Oh, I don't... I don't think I'm that hyperactive. I think I'm more on the chill side. I'm a chill, cool person! Oh what? It takes too long and you say a year or so? Think about the ti... Process timeframe? Yeah, it's... It takes long! And it's... It's been like... I've been wanting to get it checked for like 3 years. And I've been putting it off for 3 years! And I've been putting it off for 3 years! I just like research and then I'm like, "Okay, that's it!" "That's it for the day!", and then I never do it again. Probably ADD, yeah, I think I'm not hyperactive. The fact it doesn't make a pause to breathe in the sentence? What do you mean? I... Searching up what ADHD is, explain why my skill has skill issues? Right? Like... It has to be some sort of problem. Like... Why I'm such a procrastinator? It has to be studied. Yay! Yay! Great time! Luckily I was yapping a bit for the last day, but I still got some more time. I'm on slide 16. Guys? These fricking... This makes no sense. I'm not gonna lie. Like, I've been reading what I've been studying this whole time? It makes no sense. Like, these slides are useless. Most of the time? I have both types of ADHD? Wait, if you have ADHD, that means you have both ADD and hyperactive! Oh, it's okay. It's okay. It's okay. Head pack, nada, nada for you! They should have an ADHD game quiz available. That'll be funny. Of course, guys! You have to get it properly diagnosed. But you know, for some people? It's either too expensive? Or they don't have the time? Or they're like me and they search about it to look at, you know, what they could do and then they give up because it seems like a really hard process? And then they keep saying, "Okay, I'll do it, I'll do it next month." And then they... Next month arrives and I do it next month and then I research a bit again, I'm like, "Wait, this is different to what I researched last month." Now it sounds even more difficult. Let me put it off the next one. And then that has been going on for... For, 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 for 3 fucking years, okay, guys? I was surprised to see your other stream. Nihongo wakaru no? Yes! Hai, wakarimasyou! Yes, yes, I am Nihongo Jozu. Yes. Wakarimasu, wakarimasu! Nani doshi? Inu doshi? Ina-san, wakamen! Yes, I am Nihongo Jozu, I am in fact Nihongo Jozu. Yes. I am here to fulfill the duties of an anime girl. ADHD diagnosis are so expensive? Yeah, for real! They're really expensive. I can't imagine like, how expensive it would be for people with like now no like healthcare coverage? Yeah, you can also have combined tab? Yeah, I heard. Also, ADHD can be combined with other things like, um... Like, other mental health issues too? It's a subcategory? Yeah, that's true. Good thing I only draw my comic right now? Okay, the deadline is stressful, but it's a few months away? Yeah, guys, always start your work early! Don't be like me! Don't be like me and cram! It's such a bad habit, guys. I do onlineers like... Like way too much. Because I cram all my work. It's not good, cuz you don't actually retain any of the information. I just remember it for the exam and I forget it. Ushido-shi, from Japan. Oh, Ushido-shi! Moo! You're a cow? You're born in the year of a cow? Or was it a bull? I think in the Chinese zodiac, it was a bull. Not a cow. But in Japan, it's a cow. I see, I see! Guys, we only have a minute... We only have a minute 30 seconds! That's less than 1 cup noodle time! It's so funny, I always count time in cup noodles. Cuz 1 cup noodle takes 3 minutes to make, right? So, if I have 6 minutes left, then that means it's 2 cup noodles. That's how I figure out time. I count it in cup noodles. Yeah. So with 9 minutes, I'm like, "Oh my god, go down, that's 3 cup noodles." But technically... Technically speaking, you could make 3 cup noodles at the same time, so it would just be 3 minutes. But like, you know if you make it like consecutively? You know what I mean? I've just joined a few minutes ago! You just joined a few minutes ago and now you're part of the fam? Yeah, you're part of my basement, what? Who said that? That's crazy! Yeah, you guys are in my basement now. This is actually my basement. Yeah, it's just fancy, you didn't realize. I'm just kidding! Or am I? That's not a bad way of counting? Yeah, guys, count your minutes in cup noodles! Count your minutes in cup noodles, it's much more fun. College brain! College is a joke, I swear! I didn't retain much of anything for school because I was so sleep deprived and they taught absolutely nothing useful or interesting? The only stuff I retained was the history stuff. Yeah. You have to study stuff that you're interested in. What are you studying about? I am studying data science right now. Yes, I do quite a few different areas of science. I'm a neat, am I allowed here? Yes. Gamer Woods! You know, a neat is an occupation at this point. And, welcome in! I'm proud of you, man! I'm proud of you. Or girl! I'm proud of you! I'm proud of you for being a neat! I'm just going to chat at the other platform of YouTube? Yeah, sure, whatever you want! Whatever you wanna do! Haha, Ella Glee, fat fiction instead of work? I am an O-PY, but I go to isekai and tell flat-chested adventurer? What do you mean? I'm not flat-chested! Yo, if I get isekais and get boobies, I'll be so happy! But I feel like... But having big boobies? They hurt, they like... They hurt your back and shoulders. So maybe I don't want big boobies? Welcome, Dyladee! Welcome Blade on the YouTube side. He... He or she or... I actually don't know your pronouns. Blade just switched over from the Twitch side. Apparently my Japanese zodiac is dog! Wow, wow, wow! Bark, bark, bark! Bark, bark, bark! Oh, Dice got the bark, bark. I see, I see. I don't know my zodiac. I don't know what my age is. I don't know my age, so I don't know my zodiac. What is a cute zodiac? I actually... I want my zodiac to be a cute animal. Like a rabbit or something. Luckily, we don't have that pay problem as guys. Yeah! Guys, my shoulders hurt so much, every day! You know, it's just so much weight! Oh my god! Guys, it's time to lock in again! If you carelessly measure a Japanese zodiac sign, it reveals your age? Yeah! But I don't know it, so it doesn't really matter. Lock in these nuts! I'm giving you the death stare. You like changing size? Is it year you were born, Ella just Googled the list? Yeah, I'm from the future though! Ah, Ushido-san! Thank you for subscribing! Arigato! Thank you, thank you! Arigato! Reishi, arigato! Diablo, thank you so much for subscribing! Arigato! Ina-san! Welcome to the classroom, I mean the space, I mean the classroom! Welcome in, welcome in! Welcome, welcome! All are welcome! Born 94, somehow my bones haven't turned to dust yet? Is being born in 95 considered old? 94, I mean? What's like... What's like... A person... What's like an old person? When do people start becoming old? When do people start becoming old? Do you like it? Like what? Like myself? I love myself! Hahaha! No, I do. Welcome into the giant locker! Yeah, welcome into the giant locker! 2 zoomers? I'm a zoomer! I zoom through time! Zoom, zoom, zoom! I'm kachaling! I'm kachaling! I still feel 16, I low-key feel the same way. I don't think I have grown that much since I was like... Since I was like... My late teens. Okay, what is your future age? My future age? Um, it's... It's... Born in '02 and I feel like I'm 73 years old! Aww! Yeah, you know, I was telling my buddy the other day? My friend the other day? And they said like, that someone like a kid? I think it was a kid? Or a teenager, I'm not sure? But, they called my friend "sir"? Like, "Oh, thank you, sir." And that made them so upset. Because they felt old! Damn, I feel bad for you, gamer! Do you like it when I chat on both sides? I don't mind! I don't mind, you do whatever you wanna do! I don't mind at all! I feel like I lucked out with no pain even though I sit at my desk like a prawn. I think, I swear to god, guys! I don't exercise? And I don't... I don't do anything at all? I just sit at my desk? All day? Like, I live a very sedentary lifestyle? That's so bad, I should start exercising. I've been saying that for like 3 years. I've been saying that for like 3 years and I haven't exercised at all? Like, I feel like I'm gonna get some sort of... Like illness? I didn't do anything at all, she pronounced proudly. Yeah, I don't, I don't! I seriously don't! It's so bad, I really should. I really should. See, I don't have... See, but I did do a little bit when I just started playing Love in Deep Space because they have... They have like an exercising feature? So I used that for a bit? But then afterwards? I just stopped exercising. Even the Ikeman couldn't get me to exercise. Thank you so much, Dino! Dino Blade! Thank you, Blade! Thank you, Blade, oh, Blade! Blade, follow me on the Twitch side and YouTube side! Thank you, arigato! Thank you, thank you! Welcome to the basement slash big locker room slash classroom! I developed a gym habit earlier this year, very much worth it! Teach me your ways, radioactive! No, the guys... See, I'm such a fucking introvert, I'm scared of the gym. That's really bad, I shouldn't be scared of the gym. But I'm scared of the gym bros? You know? All the people that... Like, I don't know how to use all the... Like the exercise equipment too? So I get really scared? Like, what if they judge me? You know, they're like, "Haha, this fucking stupid ass bitch doesn't know how to use the equipment properly." I will cry, I will run and cry like a little bitch, I swear! Scared of their big muscles? I'm not scared of their muscles, I'm scared they're judging me. I'm scared they're judging me. Get a friend to take you? I don't have any friends? Who like to exercise? I do have friends! But I don't have any friends who like exercising. All my friends live a very sedentary lifestyle. I've always heard gym bros are actually pretty cool and welcoming? You think so? Yo, maybe I should befriend a gym bro? Maybe they'll help me? Maybe they'll help me get more active? Yeah, you can ask someone for help? You think so? Maybe I should break my shell? And actually walk up to someone and be like, "Ah, excuse me? Can you teach me how to use this?" Small ego! Bro, I do! Especially in the gym! I'll die, I'll die! Their big muscles are gonna crush my ego, man! It's cute, you think so? Kyla with all the gamer friends lol? Nah, actually. But I have... Actually, my friends are mostly normies. Like, of course I have friends that I've made through VTubing too? But a lot of my friends are normies. They don't know anything about VTubing or games. They are, yeah, I've asked random people at the gym to help me with the weights and to spot me. Hopefully, I'm mean nice people. Hopefully. If you want, I know a fitness VTuber? There's a fitness VTuber? There's a fitness VTuber? What are their names? Their names? My normie friends? Um... Jimmy, Timmy and Bob. Yes. My head is basically the way the laugh emoji is tilted? Tilt? Tilt? Boop? 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 I can introduce you? What's their name? I wanna know, maybe they'll motivate me to stay fit? To stay fit, I'm not even fit, to become fit! Fit in these balls, what? That's crazy. Who said that? Chat, you're so naughty! Tusk, tusk! I have no idea why I walk like that? And your friends seem interesting? My friends? My friends are pretty cool. Japanese ASMR VTuber to a sit-up stream? Did 200 reps of sit-ups and got 5,000? She was crazy? 5,000?! It's just so hard for Kyla to exercise being so well-endured, of course. Channel is Ethan Wernimont. Ethan... Wernimont. Did I spell it correctly? I did. Let me search again. Ethan Wernimont. Yo, this person is jacked! See, this is the type of person I'm scared of! Come on and start strength! And also you look flabbergasted when you stay silent? Really? Ah! Do I look at that? Like... Ryu Onishi. Ryu Onishi. With a VTuber? Why? Why do I not see any VTubers by that name? No, but I think, I think I just need to like, You know what, you're right, maybe I should just listen to a bunch of ASMRs and like, And like make that My, you know what, I should just exercise on the stream! I should do a exercise stream! And that will force me! That will force me! That will force me To, to exercise. Czech Youtuber, yes, I am, I think I found him! Next time get eat, bye bye, good luck with your studies, thank you! Thank you, thank you, thank you! Eat something nice! They only do an exercise str- nevermind, that was a Donald Will. Oh yeah, when I had to do sit-ups, I couldn't even do 10 sit-ups, guys! That was about a year ago. Yeah. Blue guy with wings, yeah, I saw, I found him! Push-ups are great stars, they do biceps, chest and shoulders and back. Aww, but sit-ups are, sit-ups are so painful! Sit-ups are painful! But I have to start somewhere. I still remember us doing them with you, oh yeah, some people did the, uh, the sit-ups with me. Crimson Shadowblade, oh, you have YouTube? Nice, nice! He's an introvert but nice, he gives tips on healthy food and training. Guys, I feel like, if I, if I master healthy food, Um... If I haven't posted like, if I have, if I have like mastered like healthy eating and exercise, I think I'll be immortal, chat. I think I'll be immortal. Forever 18 VTuber, what do you mean? I'm not forever 18, I'm a growing girl! I'm a growing girl! That's right! Immortal from Chubbiness? I'm not chubby! I'm not! You already are immortal, you haven't died yet, right? Ey, you're kinda smart though! Schrodinger's mortality, you kinda, that kinda smart though, you right! Growing girl, your ego or... haha! Both. Both. Yes. Sometimes growing your ego a little bit can be healthy. What usually going on this channel? What usually goes on this channel? Usually I play games. I play games, And I say stupid things, that's right, and you'll have to deal with it. Agreed, would just go on a surprising amount of collabs? Oh yeah, I've been doing a lot of collabs with the same person! Yeah. I should collab with other people, too. Also it's a collab channel, I hope YouTube blessed me with this Skyrim players. Skyrim players? What's Skyrim? Is it a game? Skyrim is like Dark Souls but less harder, oh! Got him! Oh! Ooh! Ooh, this is a big dragon! It's a big dragon, I'm seeing a big drag- I'm distracted! Wait, all the timer's gone! Let's go! Talking time! Talking time! You know, it get really hard to get, uh, to know it, it took me about 2 weeks before played To understand how the mechanics work, then they deleted it and said it was over, it made me feel amazing! What do you mean? I hate studying, it's hurting my brain. Halfway through the slides, yeah! I'm almost there. I'm almost there. There's too many, I think... I think this is stupid, I don't see how this is helping me! Like, what, what, what am I actually looking at? A little bit more than halfway, I'm, I'm almost there. I'm almost there, I'm like 50 slides in. Right, I'm meant to be studying, thanks for reminding me, Kylo! Shinnyon! Shinnyon, what do you, what do you, what do you mean? What do you mean, you haven't been studying, you be yapping? Bad, bad. No, 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 that's a no, no, you're meant to focus. Think of Skyrim as a medieval GTA, makes sense. Oh, do I get to hunt dragons in Skyrim? Do I get to go like, Do I get to ride dragons? Do I have my own little Toothless? Can I, can I be hot like Hiccup? Hearts of Iron 4 is like Dark Souls but it looks like a messed up Excel sheet? You're sick, wait, Shinnyon, you're sick? Oh no, get better soon, I hope you get better soon. Nada, nada, get better soon. You got to ride dragons, do, do I get to fight dragons? Oh hell yeah! Hell yeah! Not exactly, it's an old game. I just like big dragons. Big dragons. Uh-huh, uh-huh. You know what's hard, the fucking, have I said this already? You know the, you know the dragon in Shrek? Yo, hear me out! Hear me out! The dragon from Shrek. Loki Kana, Kana, Kano Batty, I, I don't know guys, kind of a batty! Even the bots are available too, don't worry, oh! Not sure if we have the tech to be as hot as Hiccup, Hiccup is so hot, chat! I love Hiccup, not, not like the first movie, like, like, near the end, you know? She's a batty for real, right? She's kind of batty, not gonna lie. Donkey scored. It's very disappointing in a game to ride dragons, really, really, is it that disappointing? But it's a dragon! It goes shush, shush, shush! Because we can technically ride them, but they don't let you control the way they attack Or direction they fly. Oh, so you're not in full control! You, we, we need to grow the bond between you and the dragon, how to train your dragon, oh my gosh! You, you know, you know? I think, I think you just need to give them lots of fishes, And, and, and lots of yummy fruits? And then, and then maybe they will, will, will be able to control them, you know? You should watch the series, Hiccup has his moments. Wait, this is, oh yeah, this is a series, how to train a dragon, you're right! Yeah, did you guys watch the live action? The live action was pretty good too. Yeah. I was surprised, I thought they were gonna flop, but it was actually really good. You might control the dragons, yeah. I'll, I'll be PsyK. I'll be, I'll be PsyK, get pink hair and cool green glasses and I'll, I'll, I'll use my, I'll use my psychic powers and I'll, I'll telepathically communicate with them. How to drain your dragon? So true! Riders are burnt, like... It'll be so bad. Imagine you could have dragons as pets though, that'd be so cool. That'd be so cool. I have my little dragon. And they spitfire, phew, and then, and I get burnt, but I still love them. Alright, time to log in, this is last session, guys. This, we'll do this and then we'll have a long break and then we'll be done for today. That's enough studying for today. Of course I'll do more, But, for now, you know, for now. Split Fiction is a cool co-op game for collab, Split Fiction! What are you doing in this game? Wait, this looks cool! I save this dragon so I can use him, um, like a bong to smoke this harmony pack? Bro, what if people, I think if people, if you could have dragons as pets, People are gonna use them for like lighters. Instead of lighters, they're gonna use dragons. Humans are horrible! But in a game, it, it's probably okay, cuz they're not real. Like me. Yeah, that's right. That's why I'm not real, do you guys know that? I'm not real, I'm, I'm actually just an AI. Uh-huh. I've just been, I've just been, you know? Made to be so real. She would probably make them into some form of transportation or fuel sources, it was so horrible! Oh, I'm glad dragons aren't, aren't, aren't here. I'd use a dragon as a pup? If it's sentient, I'm gonna teaching it how to play MTG. I'll, I'll give my dragon lots of kisses. Fly Rising is a dragon version of Neopets if you wanna try it, oh my god, Neopets! I've heard about Neopets, And their paintbrushes. Maybe I'll give it a try. Man, I wish we had dragons, imagine I kill a little baby dragon blowing on its little buddy, right? Imagine we had baby dragons! QueenB77, thank you so much for subscribing, arigato, thank you, thank you! Queen Bee! Queen Bee! Beeeee! Oh my gosh! Queen Bee! I can be your queen bee! Oh baby, I rule! You can't even unlock a species and collect them like Pokémon. Gotta catch them all, Pokémon! Be your dragon, Uh, and yes, you will love the desires, ooh! I like cool dragons, I think dragons are cool. Man, I wish dragons, I wish, I wish dragons were real. I think, I think my life would be a little bit more brighter if I knew that dragons were real. They're real to me! Right, right, sorry, sorry guys, yeah, yeah, they, they, they're real! They're real! There is no dragons but really cool jet fighters? Jet fighters? Jet fighters? What do jet fighters do? Do they use their jetpack to attack? Oh my god, that rhymed. Dragon that flies don't exactly exist, but in Southeast Asia, especially Indonesia, Has what called Komodo dragon. Komodo dragon, which has deadly saliva, wait, I've heard of this before. Komodo dragon. Yeah, the big one! Yeah, I've seen these! Not in real life, I wish I could see them in real life. Oh, by the way, Split Fiction is based from the same depth as It Takes Two, another great co-op game. Oh, It Takes Two, apparently guys, there's a thing, There's a thing with It Takes Two where like, if you're a couple, You, you start playing It Takes Two, And then before you finish playing It Takes Two, you break up! I heard, I heard it's a thing! Like, like people play It Takes Two and their friendship ends before they finish, or they, they break up. I thought you said Komodo? Gueyo Piyosu, Kodomo? No, Komodo, Kodomo means child. Little relationship destroyer game like Monopoly, yeah! But, but, but not in the way that it causes a fight! in the way that like, you just never finish it! Cuz it's such a, it's a pretty long game! So before you finish it together, you break up. I heard that's a thing. It Takes Two is on sale right now? Time to test your friendship, Kala! Oh no! Oh no, I'm scared! I'm scared! What if it destroys my friendship with someone? Surely if you manage to finish the game, that your friendships or relationships come out stronger? That's true! That's true! My god, that means we did it, we went through it! Ella, please search Fly Rising Express to give you a peek on the designs. Oh, they actually look like Pokémon. These Loki remind me of the evolution spot dragon. Or is it? Low. Maybe it's... Useless! But there's a cuter word for it. I know! Man child! Why you always come around into me? Been through hell together? We did it! We did it! Oh my god, I need to do it with a friend though. It would be funny if, like, if you were actually like in a relationship? I wanna know if you'll make it through. I wanna know if you'll make it through. Oh cool, apparently only one person needs the game and can invite others to play. Oh, so you both don't need to buy it? Not sure how it works though. I think I know how. I think you just have to invite them or something. You should be able to access the public Fly Rising to explore. Ah, okay, okay. Kinda interested to wonder what the cause of the relationship void is. I think... Hmm... I think it's just like, it's not the game's fault. It's more so like, while you do the game, something else happens during that duration where you try to fit. I feel like people don't finish it all in one go. So after like, they play, have a break, and then play again, and have a break. Between that time of the break, during that duration of like, maybe a few days or few weeks, maybe something happens. And it just doesn't last. Didn't know that was a thing? Apparently it's a thing, I heard about it. People like, the relationships don't last... You know those people who say like, "Relationships don't last after 3 months"? It's the same thing. It's like a stupid theory. But sometimes it happens. But that doesn't mean it's correlated to the actual relationship falling apart. But I thought it was funny. That maybe your game makes people think about their own relationship. That's true, maybe! Maybe, cuz it's about... It's about a mom and a dad, right? Maybe, maybe! Maybe they're like... They're like subconsciously reflecting on their own relationship. Hello Phoenix, welcome in! What are you studying? I'm studying... Studying data science, and I'm trying to catch up on my lectures cuz I am 14 lectures behind. That's on me though, that was my fault. There's a lot of work, Kala. Yeah, I put it off for too long. I put it off for too long, and now I am facing my consequences. Oh my god! 1 minute 24 seconds left, and I'm free! I'm free! Chat, don't let her leave? What, what do you mean? Amaboto kon! Welcome in, sobra, sobra! Oh my god, we're done! I'm so happy! I'm so happy, I'm free! I'm free! I'm free! Oh my god! My handcuffs are gone, and shackles have been released, and I'm free! You have favorite game lists or future games you wanna try? Ooh, future games, I wanna try, I wanna try Eeb! I wanna try, um, um, um... I also wanna keep continuing Minecraft because I have a touch Minecraft though. I wanna get better at Minecraft. She's so happy, chat is adorable! Are you free? I'm free! I'm free! I'm free, chat, free! Let's talk for 10 minutes. I'll talk for 10 minutes, and then we end the stream. I'm so happy! Thank you guys for being with me during these hard times. Have you tried any Minecraft horror mods? I haven't! I've only tried the Pokémon mod. Yes. Yes, yes. Yeah, I need someone to teach me how to play Minecraft. Minecraft is lit, you need a big tip? If you do a server, make a tight security? Last week my server got hacked because of lack of security? No! Who did? I'll bonk them for you! I'll bonk them! I'll be like, bonk, bonk, bonk! How dare they? How dare they? Yuppie, Pokémon collapsing, yuppie! I also do wanna play Pokémon. I have never played Pokémon in my life. I have played Pokémon with my cousin's old DS. But when I was like a kid, when I was... EB Kala used to play it. Um, and... And that's the only Pokémon I played, but I don't know which one it was. I don't remember. Hmm... It had a Pokémon? Let me see if I know the starters. It had like, it had Chikorita? It had Chikorita as a starter, and I would always choose Chikorita. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's the only Pokémon I played, and I don't think I played it properly. I kinda just collected Pokémon, and I was like, "Oh, this one's cute", or "Oh, this one's cute". I didn't really know much about it because I was EB Kala. EB Kala didn't know anything about Pokémon, and EB Kala doesn't know anything about Pokémon either. Yeah. But honestly, I have... I think Pokémon is just fun to look at as well. Pokémon is fun, but I personally prefer Pokémon black and white. Oh! I'm studying English, uh, listening, so I was able to catch Pokémon just fine. Pokémon! Gotta catch them all! Pokémon? You're studying English? Wow! So studious, studious! Wow, erai! Yoshi, 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 yoshi! Erai desune! Generation 5 Osho-Wa and... Is that T-Pik or Ta-Pik? Osho-Wa! I have a friend who likes Osho-Wa. I don't really know much about Pokémon, so is it really all that or not? I also don't know much about Pokémon, but I understand why people are so invested in it cuz they're just so cute to look at. And like, the cards too? Ta-Pik, is it Ta-Pik? Yeah, some cards are so pretty. I think I'll be the type of person, if I was a Pokémon card collector, I would just like, collect cards that I think look pretty. I'm like, "Eee, welcome back, Okari!" Yeah, I understand why people are so into it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think I wouldn't be the type of Pokémon card collector who will try to get the rarest one. I think I'll try and just get the prettiest one that I like. Yeah, but I do have Pokémon plushies. I sleep with them every night. I have Pitlop because Pitlop's my favorite Pokémon. And Espion? Yeah, actually, my favorite evolution is Glacion, but I thought Espion was really cute, so I also got Espion. And then I have Snorlax plushie! Yeah! And I sleep with them every night. They're my kids, they're my children. They're my babies. They're my babies. I love them. I love it, love it, love it. Yeah, I've been to the Pokémon Center a few times. I haven't been to the Pokémon Cafe though. I do want to go. Yeah, seems fun! Do you know Pikachu dances in the Pokémon Cafe? A big, 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 big Pikachu dances while you're eating food. That sounds like a dream. Sounds like a safe sleep. Mm-hmm! If I get attacked... I have my kids to protect me! I have my kids to protect me. That's right, subscribe! I love Snorlax though. Snorlax is the most comfy to sleep with cuz big belly. Big belly, and I can hug you. Ah, I didn't even get that much work done, but I did lock in. And that's all that counts. As long as you start, I feel like, as long as I start, I can lock in. You know, after the stream, I'm gonna keep going. That's right. Guys, when does studying actually end? Does it ever end? Does it ever finish? Or am I stuck in this... In this studying hell forever? Snorlax plushie is cute and chubby! Yeah! The Snorlax plushie I have is quite small, but even then, it's chubby. It's a chunky boy. It's a chunky boy. The only Pokémon I kind of know about is Vaporeon. Oh, Vaporeon's cool too! Yeah, yeah, yeah! Oh, I love the evolutions! They're so cute! I love the designs! Yeah, I have a friend who has a Sylvian plushie on their bag. It's very cute. A really mini one. They have like the keychains. And they have a Sylvian one, and it's so cute! Oh yeah, I studied while sleeping, forgot to say. I remember everything I studied while sleeping. Eh? That sounds sus. Are you sure? Are you sure, sure? Are you 100% sure? And you studied while you... You mean you were revising while you were sleeping? Sometimes I close my eyes and I revise the content that I learned throughout the day, you know, because I'm anxious. Yeah, but not anxious enough to like get me studying early. It will end one day. You think so? You think my studying will end one day? One day, I'm going to wake up and I don't have to study anymore? Not only knowing about Vaporeon is kind of sus? What do you mean? Pokémon knowledge varies from person to person. Sorry, but while sleeping, yeah, honk shoeing, honk shoeing my algebra homework. Honk shoeing... Honk shoeing differentiation. Yep. That's right. Guys, I'm not sleeping. I'm studying, okay? I study when I sleep, okay, guys? I'm actually studying. Well, yeah, I don't know much about Pokémon, though. I don't know. My Pokémon knowledge is very tiny. Yeah. Like my brain. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I have extensive knowledge on... What do I have extensive knowledge on? On BL! On BL, yes, that's right. That goes for maths in general. Algebra is too easy to be revised. Algebra can get a little bit complex, but I feel like if you know the general rule, it's not too hard. Pokémon cards are sold out everywhere. I feel like people are just bulk buying. Yeah, when I went to the Pokémon Center, I remember they had a limit on how many Pokémon cards you can buy at once. Okay, time to drill into you Digimon 2. Digimon, okay, my Digimon knowledge is like zero. I know nothing about Digimon. Well, it's about Elite Ball knowledge. Balls! Balls! Elite ball knowledge? Ay yo! Whose balls? My balls or yours? Yeah, there's this person on TikTok, and they collect a bunch of Pokémon balls that are severely overpriced. Do you guys know that person? I think they have like a reaction channel. They're so funny. Their reactions are so funny too. But like, they have like a Pokémon ball collection, and they just buy a bunch of Pokéballs that are severely overpriced. Same, I'm a boring person too, and the only thing I really know about are memes and internet culture, especially from Instagram. Do you guys watch Instagram reels or TikTok? Because I think I'm more of a TikTok person. Like, I barely get Instagram reels. Oh my god! We only have 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1! That's it for this study session! YouTube Shorts only. Do you watch YouTube Shorts? Right, that's a thing too. Instagram Reels, ah... So no one looks at... No one doom scrolls TikTok? It's just me? Oh, what the hell? I don't touch TikTok or Instagram. Really? Really? My glob? Oh, my glob. Are you sure? Yuppie! We finished! We finished confettis flying everywhere! Imagine watching short form. What do you mean? Short forms are great. Time's up, study now? No! I finished my study session. I finished it. I have completed it. I have looked through all 97 slides. I have finished. They were low-key kind of useless, but I did it. That was all my work. Alright, guys! Thank you for joining me for studying! I enjoyed it very, very much. Only shorts I've watched are by VTubers I like. That's true. That is true. My YouTube Shorts are only VTubers right now. I've only watched like Kala's 2 shorts. I only have 2 shorts. I should make more short form. I should make more short for content. Yeah, maybe I should hire someone to make more short form content for me. Yeah, but thank you, guys, today! Otzukale! Sorry for the short stream! Also, tomorrow's Uma Musume stream, I don't know when I can do it, but it's probably going to be later time. Later, later, later time. But I hope you guys can still join. Alright, guys! Bye-bye! Otzukale! Otzukale! Okay, I enjoyed the stream, by the way, so I'll follow. Oh, thank you! Thank you, Phoenix, for following. Thank you on the Twitch side. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the stream! Hope to see you play the next one. Yes, I will. I will play. I don't do study streams that often. I rarely do them, in fact. Otzukale! Time to go back to jail! Time to school later, real quick. I love Uma Musume, what the heck? I love Uma Musume too! Alright, guys! Bye-bye! I love you, guys! I hope you guys have a good morning, afternoon, night, evening, wherever you are in the world! And I'll see you, guys, in the next timeline! Bye-bye!